...currently assigned to community development and the mileage of those vehicles and some of the issues, problems that we're having with those cars right now. I have their memo. They recommended that I budget 30,000 this year to keep those cars maintained. I cut that in half. I put 15,000 in my budget to maintain the existing vehicles, which again is sort of what spurred me to investigate maybe replacing a couple of the vehicles. Three of the vehicles assigned to community development are in the 90,000-plus mileage. The car I'm driving is almost 94,000 miles right now. And that's hard mileage. Again, these cars are passed down from the police department, so the engines, which typically run all the time when the police are using them, the engines could have 150,000 miles on them. But at this point in time, it's going to start getting expensive to maintain some of these older cars, which is why those figures are.
We're only taking, Liam, a difference of maybe $3,000 in new vehicles and repairs.
Well, that's again why I put in for them.
Mr. Newzio.
As far as the new cars, I mean, is this becoming like a policy decision? Because if we're gonna buy the building department new cars, then there's no, they don't need a car handed down from the police department. Does that mean we're gonna use those cars an extra year in the police department? And if we're getting these new cars, we probably don't need to hire the new mechanic because now we've got a lot of new cars driving around.
Well, I guess I would say there's two different issues in terms of whether we need a new mechanic or not, if we just have a reduction of two cars in the fleet. When they hit the end of the lifespan from a police perspective, if we wouldn't recycle them over to community development, we'd just sell them at auction or sell them on the Internet and dispose of them like that.
Okay. Mayor Johnson, I know she had to hand up.
Alderman, please started to ask my question, but now you just posed a new one. So we're changing policies? There will no longer be a bump down from the police department into community services or into public works or other departments?
Well, there'll still be a bump down for the other ones. I mean, I'm not sure this really changes the policy. All this does is give these two.
How many cars do you own in your fleet now? Five?
Five.
Five. And they're all hand-me-downs. So what this does is replace a couple of the hand-me-downs with two new ones, which we would budget for replacement when they come to the end of their useful life. But that wouldn't probably be for at least six to eight years because they don't get the kind of wear and tear that a police squad car would. The other three vehicles would continue to be police hand-me-downs.
Which, following up on that, you're presuming the maintenance on your existing vehicles you have now, aren't there, didn't we just get three new squads? And aren't there new bump downs coming into?
It's my understanding that of the three squads that are going to be bumped down, two of those will probably need to be sold right away. There will be one that apparently is in good condition, that I've heard can be assigned to community development. Again, I think what we need to do is get rid of the higher mileage vehicles that we're driving. I think if we can get a recycled squad car that has 60,000 miles on it, you know, we can keep that for several years and keep using it. The concern here and why I had to put so much money in there for vehicle maintenance, again, is that three of the vehicles we have, you know, two of them are over 90,000 miles, the other one's right about at 90,000 miles. The thing is too, when we look to resell these vehicles, once you start to get up 90,000 miles, the resale value drops dramatically.
So what is the year and the mileage of the next bump down vehicle you're getting?
I thought it was somewhere in the low 60,000-mile range.
For these, what do you call these things? I would make a motion to include the purchase of these two new vehicles for community development. I think that would be a prudent way to go. Do you get warranties with these? I mean, like the regular vehicle warranty or?
Built into this purchase price, I opted to include the dealer's extended warranty, which would warranty the vehicles up to 100,000 miles.
I believe that would be a prudent choice. I don't know if you need it in the form of a motion or what.
Okay. Mr. Newzio.
John, are these cars, would these cars be purchased because of prices you got, like the police department, that state purchase or whatever, or we just go into a dealer here?
No, no. This is through one of the state purchasing pools.
I don't understand why we would buy an extended warranty. First of all, I'm gonna ask a question. What's the cost of them?
Extended warranty is, I believe, $995 per vehicle. I have it here, though. Let me double check.
Okay. Well, why would we spend $1,800 for a warranty when we maintain maintenance staff? And second, the manufacturer has a warranty on it for a certain amount of time and a certain amount of miles that's bumper to bumper. So you're using a warranty only after it kicks in because you have the primary warranty from the manufacturer initially covering it for, say, 36,000 or 50,000 or five years or three years, depending on the car that you buy and what the warranty is from the manufacturer. If the car were totaled, say, in an automobile accident in three years, you would never even have an opportunity to use the warranty. But other, my concern is, and my objection is, unlike a private person who has to draw on his personal resources to pay for maintenance in the fourth, fifth, sixth year, we have on-staff employees who are responsible for that work. Then are you saying we should fire somebody because we have a warranty and we don't need a maintenance department?
No. What I'm saying is that I believe the standard dealer warranty on this car, in fact, that's right here, it's three years.
36,000.
36,000 miles, five years, 60,000 miles on the powertrain.
I think that's sufficient.
So for an extra $995 per vehicle, we get five-year, 100,000 miles.
No, I don't think it's worth it. Not when we have a staff that's on payroll for 40 hours a week to handle that.
That's fine. I just, at that point, included it in, but that would lower the investment by about $2,000.
Any motion to go ahead with this? I'd like it to include the removal of the warranties.
Mr. Coles.
I just wanted to add about 36,000 miles, three years. You've got to remember, the fellows that are working, the mechanics, probably don't rebuild transmissions. And if you have a transmission that goes out after 50,000 miles, they have to probably take the transmission out and send it out and have it rebuilt, and then you start talking probably $1,500 or $2,000 for a transmission. So your warranty to 100,000 miles on this powertrain is worth spending the extra buck. And it might be a warranty where he can also probably get oil changes and everything on the warranty for free. So, I mean, you've got to remember to read the warranties before you buy them. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, there's a sense to put this back in the budget, I guess.
No, Christine doesn't.
Christine?
Well, maybe you should poll us.
Well, that's why I'm like.
I want to know how many vehicles we currently have, what their years are, and if possible the miles, before I decide that I'm gonna bring in two new cars, when, I know several Aldermen, several months ago, were griping about all the new purchases, so let's get everything straight before we put this in the budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we hold this aside then and revisit this once we get that info?
I don't think we're gonna finish the whole budget by 10:30 tonight.
No? Oh, that's fine. We'll hold that.
We've got another meeting in two weeks. We'll have to make some changes.
Okay, we'll hold that. Okay, so we'll come back to that. The only other item that I, Mr. Coles.
I've got one question. Proposal for 2010. We've got $100,000 for downtown study. Who have we got for that to do the study?
We have to send that out for an RFQ. The mayor and another Alderman asked me if we could just select a consultant based upon the RFQ we sent out for the Thorndale study. The city attorney has advised me, since that was an RFQ specific to Thorndale Avenue, we're gonna have to send it back out for additional proposals, and I don't know what the city council will decide in terms of whom to hire.
Okay, but that's for 2010. That ain't in this budget.
Well, it's recommended in the budget. The $100,000 are in.
I know, I saw that, and I didn't see it under the projected. It's proposal in 2010, it wasn't in, it wasn't in the.
No, it's not in the '09 projected. This is money that we're proposing for next fiscal year.
Next fiscal.
Right.
This is 2009, 2010 budget, we don't know. This is 2009, 2010's budget. So.
Okay, all right.
My opinion.
Okay. I just wondered what's going on.
I believe we have a downtown study done as we speak right now. My opinion, until we find out construction, that road project's going, I recommend that we take the downtown study out of the budget for this year.
I don't think we should remove it.
Mr. Caddell.
I need to ask somebody in the room what they can tell me about our engineering process and progress with the potential Irving Park bypass. I mean, are we premature to think that we'd be able to do a downtown study this year? Don't we need to wait until we know what's happening with bypass dog league for sure? Otherwise, we're making a lot of assumptions for $100,000 that we don't know that we nailed it down yet.
I don't expect any construction to begin in calendar year 2010 with respect to the underpass. The last time I talked to the consultants and IDOT, they were looking at an environmental assessment first and then preliminary and final engineering drawings. And the last time I talked to them, they said best-case scenario is probably mid to late 2010 if everything goes well. So I don't see that in this fiscal year that we're talking about, that you're gonna see any substantial work in terms of dirt being moved.
I think I was asking less about the work itself, but more about the consensus and the commitment to what, if anything, is gonna happen. Do we see that being, you know, happening before the '09, '10 budget is over?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
The engineering consultants and the public meetings that they're having and the buy-in and the general consensus of all the engineers associated with the project, the final layout and an absolute commitment from Illinois to move forward with the project as designed. It sounds like that's quite possibly in the same timeframe as you're talking about with next year's budget and the actual construction, if we're even lucky to see it at that point. So what I'm asking about, I don't care that they may not bring the first bulldozer over, but I want to know, is the plan a done deal in this budget year? Could it be?
In this coming budget year, I would expect significant progress to be made in terms of the environmental assessment and the engineering design. I don't think in the period between May of '09 and April of '10 that you'll see any construction start.
Okay.
Mayor.
I mean, just to clarify, though, if we're talking design, we are talking about, we have adopted the bootleg plan in the position that we've been discussing the last few months.
Yes.
So you actually have, we are gonna do the grade separation, we know where it's gonna be because you're doing design-engineering.
Right.
In this fiscal year.
In this fiscal year, design-engineering will start.
John, you've got to follow up with that, then?
Yeah, my follow-up is, I mean, just a concern for, you know, the general way of life around here. I mean, a consensus today doesn't guarantee the design or the construction. I mean, I don't know that we've got a commitment from all the other parties involved beyond the confines of Wooddale, including Illinois. I know there's a consensus to complete the study, and that $11 million or whatever is out there, but beyond that, for the actual construction is what I'm concerned about. Maybe I missed something along the way, but that's the commitment that I want to know that we've got for sure before I want to spend 100,000 on a downtown study. I mean, it sounds like it's going in that direction, but it's not, is it a done deal?
I don't think anything's a done deal until you break ground.
Mr. Newzio.
After talking to Alderman Wesley, telling me about this other downtown study that was done either just before he got on the council or in his first year, I'd like to see that study before we spend another 100,000. We're gonna repeat the same work. I'd really like to see, I'm sure it's gotta be somewhere in City Hall here where we can see these plans and this so-called study before we spend another 100,000.
Wasn't it the Hyman study or Hather, the Camaro? Camaro study? And that was about two, three years ago?
Is it true then?
So, I mean.
Do we have one?
I'm sure we have a copy.
If we have one, I'd like to see it before I vote. Yeah, let's do another one.
Okay, but the reason why I'm considering taking this out of the budget is because, first of all, the way the economy is now, we're going to do the study, and with the economy being so tight, what's going to say that this thing is going pop? We don't even know where Thorndale's going to pop. I mean, I did, and I'm sorry, I missed that meaning, but I did watch it on TV, and the Coda group did an outstanding job with the presentation, no doubt about. I have no problem going forward with that one. I have a problem doing a downtown study until the economy turns around. That's why I'm recommending that we take $100,000 out of the budget, but again, it's council's decision.
Mr. Newzio.
I don't have a problem going forward with the study, being that I think, me personally, I think we should get things laid out so when the economy does turn around, we're not behind and we're ahead of the game. But if we have one, I don't want to spend another 100,000 if we're sitting on one. So I'd like to see the one that was done before we even make a decision on this.
Mr. Knight. Oh, I'm sorry.
I made a note to dig that out and make a copy for everybody. I think at the end of the day that you could do one of two things. You could leave it in and decide down, I mean, leave it in the budget, decide down the line you don't want to actually pull the trigger, or you can take it out of the budget and decide after you take a look at what else we've got that you want to add it back in later on. I mean, this is just a planning document. It doesn't set anything in stone.
Mr. Knight.
I'm with you, Alderman Wesley. I think we've probably got a million dollars' worth of study sitting on the shelf somewhere. And I think this is maybe a little premature at this time. I want to see it taken out, too.
Christine Winger.
I really see the next step, that we look at the study that's being referred to, and we also ask for staff's opinion on, is it usable? Because I'm hearing that there is engineering work that is gonna take place in the next fiscal year. And if the engineering work is gonna take place, then they're gonna need to know how to engineer it based on economic development. That's my understanding at least. So let's not make a quick decision until we at least see the study and get feedback from staff.
We can always amend this.
Mr. Newzio.
I mean, naturally, we can take it out now and we can always amend to the budget during the year because the money's gonna be there because it's, right now, it's there, so.
Like I said, you've got two choices. You can leave it in now and decide down the line that you don't want to do it, or you can take it out and then decide down the line that you do, and we just pass a budget amendment.
Well.
I'd rather take it out until we see what's what.
I like to take it out. Let's see, in favor of hands to take it out. Hands is leaving.
Pending an opinion from staff, how long will it take to look at the study and say whether it's gonna be useful or not that was done?
Couple of weeks, max. I mean, if I can find it, if I can take a look, I can read it, then, you know, Ross and I can give you our.
I have a copy of it. I'll give it to you.
Ross should really have it and be using it, essentially.
I have a copy of it.
I'm a little concerned that he wouldn't.
As of right now, we'll take it out. We can always add it back in. Okay, so take $100,000 out. Always add it back in. The item I had is Land Vision is in here. Tell me why they're in here and are we ever going to finish this project?
I want to get this done. That's Mr. Clicker's number-one priority now that we've moved some things, some people around down there. John told me, I'm going from memory, you've got a meeting up with Land Vision and Alderman Caddell and Alderman Shockey in April, did you tell me?
Yes, Mr. Clicker and I met with Land Vision and gave them a deadline, which is actually next week, to present to us a finished document, or at least a draft that's very close to a finished document, to enable us to review it. And then we will get, we will meet with Alderman Caddell, Alderman Shockey, and then we will get copies subsequently to the council for your review.
Okay.
But again, as the city manager said, that was assigned as Ross's number-one priority right now. So the money that you see in here for Land Vision, that's just, would be the remaining portion of the money that is still owed them.
And it's probably roughly $19,000. Okay, do you have anything?
Same question I gave Wally. Basically, there's no positions that need to be filled in your department, and we're not hiring anybody this year.
Correct.
Mayor, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, while you're sitting there, could you give me a snapshot? What's going on from your perspective? Do you have any plans under review? Anybody knocking on the window for building permits, single family, anything coming down the pike other than the Thorndale corridor, I mean, the Devon corridor?
We have just taken in a couple of permits for some remodeling up in the industrial park, some new tenants moving in, which is a nice change instead of people moving out. Our electrical permits, our roofing permits stay fairly consistent year to year. We are anticipating a little bump up in the building permits from last year, as the city manager mentioned earlier. I think, as you mentioned last week, we've got 100 homes that have been foreclosed upon. I anticipate with the mortgage rates going down again, those homes will be purchased. You know, what we found in our experience with a foreclosed home, it's either been vacant and has not been properly maintained, or a lot of times before the people move out, they'll do some damage to the house, they'll just stop maintaining it. So I would expect as these foreclosures are turned over and people buy them, that they would be coming in for remodeling permits and so forth.
Any new construction at all in your in-basket?
No.
Okay.
Train station.
Okay.
Mr. Knight.
Yeah, before we go to the next IT or whatever, we take five and maybe give our minute-taker a break here.
I just asked her, are we gonna take a 10-minute break?
10?
Is anyone else on the building department? Are we pretty clear with that one? Okay, we're gonna take a 10-minute. Okay, I believe we in, lose my spot here, computer, technology, IT. Any questions on that?
Mr. Caddell.
$101,000 in outsourced IT tech. Approximately, how many hours of consulting time is that? I mean, is it close to a full-time employee for a year or part-time, the equivalent of
About 1,600 hours of consulting time, but that $101,000 isn't just for IT consulting services. That is also for contractual services with our Team One lines and things like that. So our actual IT consulting services are only about $60,000. If you figure the average, you know, actually, on the low end, a full-time IT employee's gonna cost you a minimum of $55,000, at a minimum.
Plus benefits.
So you throw in benefits and all that, and you're still cost-saving at $60,000 outsourcing.
Okay, yeah, I was just kind of curious. Is this basically cover about, you know, somebody here most of the time?
And what we do also is we have two employees on staff that handle any IT problems they can internally. For instance, I do a lot of the IT stuff. Craig Celia from the police department does way more than I do. So we try to get as much done in-house as we can, but what we can't, we have to outsource.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that? Go ahead.
Jeff, I know I've been talking to you about these computers. I know part of this $61,000 is the software. Basically, we're replacing, we're, two more years, this year and next, and all the computers in City Hall have been replaced, correct?
That's correct. You got an IT strategic plan, maybe two years ago. We've been following this plan very strictly. The first part of the plan was actually monitor replacement. We've completed that. We've gone to the flat panel monitors instead of the CRTs. They were bad for the eyes, high-energy consumption. And coincidentally, we also did the PC replacement. We did, year one was last year. Year two will be this coming fiscal year that we're talking about now. And then in fiscal year 11, we're gonna, that'll be the third and final year. And then in fiscal years 12 and 13, we wouldn't purchase any computers. And then in fiscal year 14, we'd start the cycle over again for three straight years. That would mean at the end of it, 20 computers would be six years old. Typically, you know, you'd like to replace a computer every four or five years in the business world. It's not like a home PC. Even a home PC, you'd probably want to replace every five years or so. I know some people keep them longer, depending on what you do with your PCs.
All right. Mine, I can't get high-speed internet out of mine, mine's sold. Okay, anything else on that one? Okay. Let's go to finance. Oh, my favorite department.
As the target level indicates, finance is down about $40,000 from last year. Most of that's due to moving part of the Human Resources Administrator out of finance into the administration and taking out the professional services that we used to have in the budget for Maggie, what's her last name? Maggie Powers. Other than that, it's a pretty status quo budget.
I think the only thing they keep in here is intern. I don't see anything. Anyone have any comments on that one? Okay, let's go to our favorite person, legal.
Department budget is down from fiscal year 2009, basically as a result of we're not using the attorney as much as we were before. It was $325,000 in 2008. We budgeted $334,000 this year. And the only reason it's not as low as the 226 that we're projecting is that we've got a labor contract coming up, and we're gonna need some legal work as we negotiate that contract.
Mr. Caddell.
Mr. Manager, this decrease due to the mandate to, you know, try to make the concentrated effort to cut down legal costs, you're still pretty comfortable with this, even though I believe there's been a recent notification of the attorney's hourly fee increase?
These numbers reflect the increase.
Okay, this is fresh, okay.
What we're doing, just as one of the things that we're doing, is we're having one of the attorneys come to each of the weekly staff meetings and try to have the department heads hit them hard that day as much as they can so they can maximize his time and minimize our legal fees.
Knight, Mayor Johnson.
Can you give me a cost benefit on the prosecution versus the money they bring in? Whether we're making or losing money doing that?
Through the police budget, you're gonna see that that's reflected in our use of overtime. Quite a few of our.
Quite a few of our officers with regards to prosecution of DUI are not having to make multiple appearances back out to Wheaton, which is then causing us to have less overtime. I believe that right now, that's a trade-off with regards to the legal fees for the prosecutor. However, we are getting our cases turned around substantially quicker than if we were using the, the state's attorney's prosecutors, which means then that as the fines are being paid, we're getting them quicker. On a typical DUI case, that thing would languish usually in the system for about three years. From the time of arrest to the time that it's actually disposed of and then collecting the fines, we're actually seeing those being resolved within six months.
So the income created on that would be shown in your budget or under the traffic fines?
Yes, you're going to see that underneath traffic fines and that will be, that'll be covered in there. And then also, there's an offset with overtime.
Mr. Newzil.
So, we had that administrative adjudication. Is that included in this or we're getting rid of that program, correct? Or what was the deal with that?
Yes, I did put in one of my goals and objectives for this year to come to the council and recommend that we discontinue the adjudication, at least for community development and property maintenance violations. I think it seemed like a good idea, we've tried it for a year. But I don't think it's accomplishing the goal that we thought it would. And I think it, when we first initiated it a year ago, we were sort of looking at it as a potential source of revenue. But what we found is for the fines assessed, we've only been able to collect about one-fourth of that. We still have quite a large amount of fine money outstanding and. I mean, the reality is people just don't have the money. The people that are in a situation where they're issued a citation for those types of violations don't have the money to pay the fine.
Okay, so we can assume that that's in this budget, that we're keeping that program. So if we do get rid of it, then this number changes here, correct?
There is a small amount of money, no amount of money is small these days, but there's an amount of money allocated for community developments, use of the adjudicator, I would have to think that the police department will continue to use it, I can't comment on that. But as far as community developments, use of the adjudicator, my recommendation to you as a council is going to be that we discontinue it.
Anything else on that, Legal? Okay. I believe we go to the police department next.
The police department target level budget is down substantially, due almost entirely to the fact that we're taking our police pension contribution out of the central services department, rather than the police department is, has been the case. And the chief has asked for one expanded level, which is twelve thousand five hundred dollars for reverse phone messaging. And I recommended that.
Go ahead. Mr. Newzil.
Chief, got a question, a couple of questions actually. You know, we heard a bunch of things about the police pension, lost so much money, six million dollars or something. But when we talked, it was more like, last year was like possibly two million or something. And I had heard we were supposed to pay this back by two thousand twelve, but after talking to you, you said it'd take twenty-eight years to pay, pay that back? Is that correct?
Mind, I am not on the board for the police pension fund, however, Deputy Chief Vest is here and he is a sitting member and I think I'll let him address that for you.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief. Alderman, last year, the pension fund was down about fourteen point eight percent calendar year, which considering the overall condition of the market was not too bad. We have a, an aversion to fixed income at this time. Part of that's based by, on statute, part of it based on the pension fund's decision to move any new funds into cash. Right now, so that amounted to a little bit over a two million dollar loss last calendar year. Right now, there is an unfunded liability of over five million in the pension fund. That's based on projected future payouts and that actually comes due in two thousand thirty-three. I actually did just look at the statute again today to make sure. So you're looking at twenty-four years that that five million is amortized over to, to pay down that, that balance to zero. There's pending legislation out there right now, I don't know if there's a chance of it passing, but would also, that would also take that possibly out forty years from now, that it would be amortized over. So basically, cities are taking out a mortgage to, to pay that, that unfunded liability over a period of years as opposed to making that decision to pay it all at once. So the loss was two million, slightly over two million last calendar year. I don't have any official numbers for this current calendar year because that quarter ends March thirty-first and then the unfunded liability is slightly over five million.
That's probably a good time to, for me to segue into something that I'd like to talk to the council about after the budget's passed, because it's not a part of the budget. About three or four years ago, I can't remember which, the council agreed to implement an early retirement program for IMRF employees. And, thank you. For the next six years, we need to pay that, over the next six years, we need to pay that, that, that obligation off. It amounts to about seven hundred forty thousand dollars. If you look at it as though it were a mortgage, you'd be paying, say, between a hundred forty and two hundred thousand dollars a year, each year in principal, and interest about fifty-eight thousand the first year and then declining to the sixth year of about fifteen thousand. Bottom line is, if we pay this out as though it were a mortgage, we'd be paying about two hundred thirty thousand dollars in interest. The thought I've got right now, and the reason it's not in the budget is because we're still trying to tweak these numbers, is that we dip into reserves for the seven hundred forty thousand dollars and we basically pay off the mortgage. We will, we will lose the obligation of two hundred thirty thousand dollars in interest. And my recommendation on that is that we would take that savings and move it right into the police pension and start to fund that pension deficiency over, over there. And we also then don't have to worry about paying off the principal each year. We basically prepaid our mortgage, if you will, and saved ourselves six years of principal payments and two hundred some thousand dollars in interest. And again, these numbers aren't completely solid yet, but sometime in May, I'm going to come back to the council and suggest that you take a hard look at dipping into this nine million dollars reserve fund that you've got and paying off that early retirement obligation, which will save us money down the line and give us some additional cash to move into the police pension fund. So just to keep that in mind as we start, as you start talking about that in, in May, that's when I plan to bring that back to the council and have some harder numbers. So just so you know, those are the thoughts that we've got bouncing around the office these days.
Mr. Coles.
I don't know if I, the money that's invested, that you have invested, I guess in the market, was that in government bonds or was that in, do you, do you know about what was invested? Why, I, I realize the stock market went crash, everybody knows that. But was that in, that wasn't in government bonds, was it?
Well, there was a large percentage, certainly that we did have in government bonds, government-backed securities.
Well, government bonds are the best thing to invest in right now.
Right, and, and we also, as a pension board, which our treasurer, treasurer Evelyn is a member of and three other people on the board, we took an, an active approach in the last year and four months of, as new tax levy revenues came in, knowing that the market was unstable, moving that money into some local CDs and local banks. In addition to having, where, where we're at right now is we're at about sixty-five percent in fixed incomes. Having a larger amount in fixed income when the market went as bad as it did, helped us to only have a fourteen point eight percent loss last year. Some of the changes in interest rates that were happening too, when you're in fixed incomes, as interest rates were going up at one point, you can still lose money on some of those. But our fixed incomes did okay. Brad shaking his head, maybe he can explain a little bit too on that. But as interest rates rose for a while, some of our fixed incomes, you did take, because it wasn't just a fixed CD, you did take some losses on. In the inverse, as interest rates came down recently, we also benefited with some increased yield returns on that, so. Go ahead.
Eventually, eventually, if the stock market goes up, your value will, will go up and you'll get, get some of that money back.
Sure.
You, 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 so it might take a while, but eventually you'll, if it goes up, I don't know if it's ever going to go up, but if it does, you'll get some of that money of that two million dollars back, so.
Right, a, a, and what we do is we do a constant rebalance of the portfolio too.
You'd have to rebalance everything.
We have an investment policy that we follow very closely.